Yes, alright. Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, February 4th, 2020, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind Commissioners, please make sure your microphone is lighted green and speak into the mic for the record. And we'll call roll. Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Commissioner Bowie?
Present.
Commissioner Crane? I think I must have an old list. Oops. Okay, let's call Commissioner Ackland. Commissioner Pfizer?
Present.
Commissioner Peterman?
Present.
Commissioner Urquia?
Present.
Mayor Turnbow?
Present.
And Commissioner Faulkner is present. We do have a quorum. And no personal appearances this evening. One item on consent agenda, approval of minutes from our December 17th, 2019, meeting. And please note, corrected page in front of you there. So, as you wish, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with noted correction or approved minutes of the December 17th, 2019, meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, let's see. That was a motion by Commissioner Urquia, right?
Yes.
And second by Commissioner Wiggins. And motion to approve consent agenda minutes from December 17th, 2019, as corrected. All those in favor, raise a hand, please. Seven. Seven in favor. And none opposed, no abstentions. Moving right along. Nothing this evening under unfinished business and under new business and update proposed to our bylaws. And Mr. Catterett or Ms. Rowe? I didn't say that right. I'll get it in a minute. Jardu? Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you. So whichever one of you?
Thank you, sir. I will make the brief presentation on this request this evening. So, there is a procedure that had been adopted by the commission. We last reviewed these back in 2015, felt it was appropriate to give the commission the entire rules of procedure again to review. Staff suggest a few changes to the rules. One being that the rules referenced at a few locations, the Community Development Department, as you know, that department name was changed in last year's budget to Development Services Department, so we recommend that change. Anywhere where there's a proposed change in language, I have highlighted in yellow the new language and simply cross through any proposed deletion of language. The Second Amendment, which was somewhat driving the review by staff of the rules, tried to bring our rules into the same language regarding absences as what we have with our City Council rules, as well as the Park Board rules, dealing with the absences. So, under Article 6, Section 9, we propose to bring a little clarity to the proposed rules. What staff had submitted initially, and I believe then the city attorney, who has a modified version of the proposal, for your consideration. What we have in the staff draft was that when a commission member would be absent for three consecutive meetings, and then we proposed to add, or for 25% or more of the total meetings held within a 12-month period. So, within any 12-month period, if a commissioner misses or is absent more than 25% or more of those meetings, the member shall automatically forfeit his or her position on the commission. That language was taken from the Park Board Rules of Procedure, the automatic forfeit of their position by missing either the three consecutive or the 25%. We're also, at the very end of this, looking at proposing, the mayor may, with the consent of the City Council, remove a member from the commission for misconduct or neglect of duty. The, I believe the city attorney has submitted for your review, the actual language from the city code regarding council meetings. And it's okay if I have you run through that at this time?
Mr. Zurk?
Thank you, Chairman. It's a pleasure to be able to present this evening. What we have provided, or what I have provided to you, is Section 111.070 of the city code as it relates to the attendance of city council members, just simply reworking the language if you were inclined to do so. I am suggesting the language based upon the excused portion, the very last portion of that sentence. So, if you were inclined to do so, the language that you could adopt in, as an alternative to what's being presented by in your packet of materials would be, no commission member shall fail to attend three consecutive regular meetings of the commission, or more than 25% of the commission's regular meetings or work sessions during any 12-month period without being excused by the commission. This would allow for an individual who perhaps misses three consecutive meetings for an identifiable health issue or otherwise, that may be coming back to the commission. You know, you might have your best commission member in the world and understand that they're going to be gone for a period of time for extenuating circumstances, and you don't want to have an automatic removal. From legal standpoint, you as a commission could decide what qualifies as unexcused. And what you will end up doing ultimately is, as a recommending body, you can have your unexcused absences reported up to the mayor, who would then be able to make a determination on the member's continued involvement on the commission. Since the mayor appoints individuals with the advice and consent of the City Council, you would basically end up letting the City Council administer its job in that capacity and not make for an automatic removal of a commission member. So, I pose that to you for discussion and debate this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zurk.
If I may, I'll just go over the last change, and then we can open it up for discussion. The final change proposed by staff is in the order of business, in where we had identified that the order of business in your rules of procedure was not matching up with the order of business on your agendas. So, we had proposed to move the roll call in front of the Pledge of Allegiance on your rules to match your agenda. I do note, though, listening to the chairman tonight, it was call to order, that you did the pledge, and you did the roll. And if that's the preference of the commission, that's fine. We'll just keep the rules as they are, and I'll change the agenda in the future.
Okay. If I can break in, I researched back 10 years. And I think 10 years ago, the old, old bylaws actually didn't address the pledge. They addressed call to order, roll call. They were moot on the pledge. And minutes reflect, we always did the pledge prior to roll call. We just rolled in. It seems natural to me. And the 2015 bylaws reflected that. And so, I've probably just been following the bylaws rather than exactly following the agenda. Shame on me.
We could adjust the agenda to match the bylaws.
I think there's inconsistency in the agendas from the 10-year period, too. But, you know, somehow we managed to make it work. Thank you. Please continue.
That's all we have for the staff report at this time, sir.
Alright. Well, no public hearing, floor's open for the Commissioners who'd like to speak first. Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Zurk, thank you for bringing the excused option information, because I happen to, as a member of the Charter Review Commission, who presided over those changes to the charter, I had my nice little printout that says both the mayor and the council have to have excuse. So, I appreciate you bringing that. My other question was, since we are somewhat of a fluid commission compared to the council, where the council has, I mean, we have a calendar, we have a set calendar, but realistically, 25% of our calendar dates, some years more, some years less, we don't have those meetings. So, my only, one of my concerns was the 25% or more of the total meetings held in a 12-month period. Do we need to state anything that specifies how many that is, or 25% of the scheduled meetings, anything that just defines? Because, you know, we might have six weeks where we don't go, and given we have some busy times where we do meet every, you know, twice a month. We've had some months where we've skipped a month, almost two months. And so, somebody could be up against a line where they've missed a handful, you know, no, nothing against them, or they've just missed time. But then we end up canceling a number of meetings, and then boom, they're behind the eight ball and see you later. Where that's more of a lack of business and the city choosing, city staff choosing to not hold a meeting. So, should we define scheduled meetings? Because then we know whether there are 24 meetings scheduled, and 25% is eight. No, sorry, six. So, sorry, my math was bad.
Suddenly, you've hit a nerve that worries me.
Right.
Mr. Zurk, so if we took 25% of all scheduled 24 meetings, but the ones that get canceled, we all miss them. So, that opens a can of worms to me when we...
Excellent point. And that's not even something I thought about. So, I just, just because I would hate for somebody to, all of a sudden, lose their position on the commission due to lack of business, due to city staff choosing to not hold a meeting, and it's no fault of any of these individuals up at the dais. So, Mr. Zurk, I don't know if there's some sort of language that I see you writing feverishly would prefer. I would love some feedback, but I just, I just don't want to see anybody, due to unforeseen reasons that were out of the control of the individuals, to all of a sudden lose their seat because of that.
If I can clarify, sorry for interrupting.
Please.
But, Mr. Catterett, check me out on this. I think it's actually in the bylaws, but staff alone does not actually decide to cancel meetings. It's joint concurrence.
Yep. That is correct. It's either the commission as a body, if I know in advance, and request you to cancel the meeting, or the chairman can cancel.
Sure.
So, it's not, I just wanted to make it clear that it's not just staff unilaterally.
Sure. I guess I meant that more broadly, but anyway, Mr. Zurk, I know you, I saw you turn your mic on, so please, if you had something?
I would simply note that it's, I'm less, I am less concerned with how you define which meetings. I like the percentages of the 25%. So, if you identify it as any meetings within a 12-month period, or originally scheduled meetings, or meetings actually occurred, that's fine. I'm just looking for the caveat in there for the allowance of the excused absences, so that it's not an automatic, okay, you've hit this number, and all of a sudden, you're out for it. I want to make sure there's parameters in there to allow for the excuse.
Yeah. And that's why I was saying, I wrote down initially scheduled on my paper, because then, then that defines a hard, fast rule of, in this case, if it is normally 24 scheduled, then the hard, fast number is six, as opposed to defining a number in the, I prefer the percentages, because maybe one year, we know that there's going to be a planning conference, and so we're not going to host one anyway, and so we're down to 22, or 21, or 23. So, I just, I would prefer, because I hate the vagueness of it. As a son of an attorney, I'm sure you can appreciate that, that having a hard, fast line in the sand. So, that way, it's not, you know, you know that hypothetically, it's six, because you can do the math in your head that I incorrectly did the first time.
So, are you, so are you okay with leaving it with the percentages in here?
I'm fine with the percentages. I just would like some sort of, whether it's initially scheduled, or however, Mr. Zurk would prefer, 25% or more of the initially scheduled meetings.
Or it would maybe be, not initially scheduled, but of the actual meetings that occurred.
Well, the hard part with that is that you don't know, like I was saying, we have 24 on a calendar, but if we actually only hold 18, 25% of 18 is way less. And you might go out of town for business for two weeks, and you on vacation for two weeks, just happened to do, and then, oh my gosh, you're at four, and then you're sick and five, oh, but we changed it from total held meetings, and sorry, you're gone.
Right. So, to your point, then, would it make more sense to say 25% of the regularly 24?
Well, the hard, I think that's why we have to be, like, initially scheduled, because the staff does provide us with an annual schedule, like they did for 2020. So, we know. And they base that off of, I mean, if there's a planning meeting that happens to fall on the first or third, you know, at the conference that's in, can't remember where it is this year, Baltimore, Houston, you know. So, they, you know, figure that in, and so they maybe only schedule 23 this year. Next year, maybe it's actually only 22. So, if we could have 22%.
No, I get that. What I'm saying is, is that would it make sense that they just put in there the normally 24 scheduled annual meetings, so that you know that there's normally 24, or just say six or more absences, and eliminate the percentage altogether? You know, because...
Sure. I just want some sort of define. I know Mr. Mayor, then Mr. Zurk both.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor Turnbow.
So, maybe Jonathan's suggestion has clouded the issue a bit, because the proposed language that's highlighted to us says, or for 25% or more of the total meetings held in a 12-month period. That's the language.
I understand. So, that's why my, my recommendation is to put something in that's more of a scheduled, because we may have 24 that we put on the calendar that we receive by staff, but due to lack of business or something else, that number might all of a sudden drop to 17.
But they're not held. The language says held.
Right. That's what he said.
Right. That's why I'm saying I don't like it, because it's our, you know, in council, it's pretty defined, that you're always going to have four meetings a month, and maybe even a fifth on a fifth Monday. Ours is so fluid that we cancel a lot of our meetings. And so, you could have already had five absences, and then all of a sudden, oh, it's almost Christmas time, we're going to cancel the next three meetings, since we have a lack of business. And then boom, sorry, you've hit that mythological number, and now you're gone. So, to me, it's too vague. But, sorry, Mr.?
I would tend, I would tend to side with the mayor on this particular analysis, and insert into the language that would say, instead of consecutive regular meetings, total meetings held. And I think the language that you're, basically what that ends up doing is, at the end of every 12-month period of time, staff will be making a determination, did you all meet, or did each one of the individual members of the commission meet their requirements? Technically, you as a commission member would then not be subject to potential removal, except for once a year, when you had missed that total number.
Well, but I think the idea here is, is if we miss, if I miss the first five meetings of the year, for the first six meetings of the year, obviously, I'm not doing, without good cause, I'm neglecting my duty as a commissioner. And I don't think you then want to wait the next 10 months to get rid of me, especially if I don't come to any of them.
But you could also insert the language in there that says consecutive regular meetings held as well. I mean, if you do a, fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings that are held, you'd be subject to that. It would remove the prospect of your...
Yeah. And I don't have an issue with the three consecutive.
Yeah, my issue is with the 25% or more of the total meetings held. That is, we're in, we're in the first week of February, and we don't know by the end of December, how many total meetings we will actually hold, because we are going to, without a doubt, I would put $100,000 bet on it right now, we're going to cancel one of the meetings between now and the end of the year. And so, we don't know what that total number meetings held are. And so, not that we're really looking to, you know, put, pin someone in a corner to get rid of them. It's not how this language is written, but I don't want somebody to, all of a sudden, when we end up canceling seven or eight more meetings throughout this calendar year, all of a sudden, the magic number went from six to five or to four, and you know what? Tough stuff.
Since we're taking this apart pretty well, I want to take apart the phrase 12-month period. So, the question I noted here, is that a calendar year? Is that a rolling 12-month period? What is that?
He said it was rolling just a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah. I read that. It says any 12-month period.
It does.
A calendar year, it's any 12-month period.
Sure. Well, that's true, too.
And that just, that even, that even convolutes then the whole percentage thing even more. Because if you, you know, like, especially take this, just the last few months, where we've had one meeting, you know, we had one meeting in December, right? And we had canceled one in November. So, just in the last three months, you've canceled four meetings. We've only had, this is our third meeting in three months. So, if you've missed one of those three meetings, you're at, just for those three-month period, you're at 33% absent, which is over the 25% threshold. And that's what I think Commissioner Wiggins is getting at, is that when you say actual meetings held, as opposed to meetings scheduled, you're going to drastically change, that percentage can change any month, whether or not we have meetings or not. And you don't, to his point, I don't, I don't want arbitrarily be removed because, oh, well, the, you know, we only had three meetings in this month, and I missed one, so I'm over, for instance, Commissioner Ackland, he's technically missed more than 25% of the meetings in the last three months, because we've only held three, and he's missed one. So, he's over that threshold. If that track record, to Commissioner Wiggins' point, if we continue to cancel meetings, and he has to miss that one that we end up scheduling two months from now, because something else going on, he's even farther behind that ball now. Now, he's at 50%. And so, at what point, you know, as opposed to meetings actually held, a percentage of the meetings initially scheduled, I think is what he was trying to get at. So, we know we initially scheduled 24 meetings for a rolling 12-month period. Therefore, if you miss more than six meetings that are actually held, then you've crossed that threshold, as opposed to a percentage of the meetings that we hold, when that number changes every month, based on whether or not we hold our meeting or not.
Yeah. And that's, that was what I was trying to get at, because if staff and Chairman Pfizer, sorry, Chairman Faulkner, Vice Chair Pfizer, sorry. And you're sad, apparently.
Congratulations.
Yeah. You got promoted. If they choose to cancel a meeting, that counts as being in attendance, because that would have been, you know, you weren't necessarily absent. So, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, because, yeah, like you said, if we only have two meetings every three months, which is not necessarily the case, as I know there's lots of stuff coming down the pike, but we have, you never know. We had a whole bunch of Conway Project meetings that were going to come up, and then somebody had a health problem, so that got pulled off. And then we had stuff down at, you know, North Cass that got, that was scheduled, and then that got pulled off, and same with Compass Health. So, there's a lot of things out of our control, that where we have good intention of attending. So, I think something to the effect of initially scheduled versus actually held.
And that's why I would lean more towards the number, as opposed to the percentage. So, if you miss, you know, so, like, we have the, if you miss three consecutive, that's that's that.
I'm fine with that one.
And then, instead of 25%, saying that if you miss six, if, once you miss your sixth meeting for the year, that's actually held, then you're in trouble, as opposed to, you know, a percentage of meetings held, because that, that number is going to fluctuate every 12, you know, on a 12-month rolling period.
So, if I can take a giant step backwards, when I first read this, I was kind of like, okay, well, why do we need this? And to me, one of the big things is, if we don't have a quorum, we can't conduct business. When you're dealing with developers and so forth, there's money on the line. Not having a quorum and being able to conduct business is a really bad thing. And especially with legal notices, things on city councils, planning, so forth. So, have I, have I missed anything else crucial, Commissioner Wiggins?
Well, and I may have just, you know, take my, potentially take my foot right out of my mouth, because we also just brought verbiage from Mr. Zurk that was talking about excuse, whereas, you know, if you are going to be, you know, you have a work meeting that's going to run later, you have a presentation, or something happens, and then you ask for excuse, that's an excuse, and that doesn't count towards your potentially six. And so, maybe that just makes the water even muddier. So, I don't know. I might have just made things worse.
And my thought was to impress upon the commission the notion of making sure that you include a continued utilization of the excused option in here. It wasn't a hangup over the, is it three consecutive, or is it 25 in any one given year? The notion, from my perspective, is make it what you'd like, as long as you incorporate some reference in there that allows for an excused option in it.
Yeah.
I think, I think the excused option is, is very good. It's not, it's not significantly different than the previous escape clause, but based on personal life and so forth, you know, family member can get an injury, break a hip, things like that, not foreseen. You know, I think we all know that, that things do pop up, that actually, believe it or not, take priority over planning and zoning commission meetings sometimes, and especially if it's yourself on the injured list. You may not be able to come if you've got coronavirus or something. Please do not. We don't want you coming to keep your attendance record clean and spreading it to the rest of us. But I, I think one of the things, going back to my question a minute ago, we like to know if someone is not going to be there, has an excused absence. We like to know. Then we can try to plan ahead, make sure that we do have a quorum, or I guess worst case, notify an applicant that, hey, this may not happen tonight. Commissioner Wiggins?
So, just to kind of bring this full circle, just because of, obviously, we add the excuse clause, which I appreciate. I still think I would like something to that initially scheduled verbiage, just because both for council and mayor attendance, it does specify 25% of the council's regular meetings or work sessions, which is something that is defined of what they are going to have. So, they do have a hard, fast number to go by. And so, it is regularly scheduled meetings or work sessions. And so, since that verbiage, if we're trying to match up more by the excused absence to follow along with the text in the charter, then something, like I was saying, initially scheduled or regularly scheduled, just so that way, we do have something that's a little more concrete. And the whole point of this is to come up to speed with the text that was approved by the citizens. And so, I think something to that effect, whether we want to call it regular meetings, or initially scheduled meetings, just something to match, because that's the whole point of this update to the text. So...
Right. Yeah. Commissioner Bowie?
Let me just pose this. We only, we typically only have a few work sessions throughout the year. So, that, that language is not going to spill over into our planning and zoning language. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah. That's why it's not included in ours versus Park Board Council have regular work sessions.
So, my question was about that, but since it probably won't be included in ours, I'll table my, my question.
Right. I'm kind of conflicted here, because on the one hand, I like consistency. You know, I did a little bit of looking at how Park Board conducts business. Actually, I didn't get much out of BZA, because they don't meet often enough. But, you know, on, on the one hand, Mr. Zurk, I am very appreciative of you bringing the, the city council wording. I like consistency. By the same token, though, I think seems pretty general agreement here that, whereas city council meets very regularly, planning and zoning commission meetings get canceled from time to time. So, I think in that regard, we aren't necessarily exactly the same, one size fits all. Mr. Zurk, something to share with us?
Thank you, Chairman. I would simply note at the top, under the same section that you're looking at, the Article 6, Meetings and Public Hearings, you do have your Section 1 under there that says, "A schedule of regular meeting dates, including filing deadlines, shall be established at the organizational meeting of the commission."
Right.
You could, in essence, make reference to the scheduled meetings under Section 1 of this article, in your attendance requirements, and then exclude anything that might get canceled.
Yeah.
That'd be sufficient. I just like having some, something that's just not a potentially made-up number by the end of the year that you have no control over, so that I reference Section 1, et cetera.
Yeah. That seems reasonable to me also.
Or even Section 2, because we have, it states there, regular meetings will be held on the first and third. So, those, those define hard, set days. So, that's a little easier to work with.
But I would reference the Section 1 as opposed to Section 2, mostly because when you get your schedule of regular meetings, staff will have taken into account, here are holidays that we know we're not going to have anything, and here are dates that we know the city is going to be closed. So, I go back to Section 1.
Absolutely. That is sufficient for me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can, can I take on another question here? Different, different, still, still in the, still in the bylaws. So, Article 6, same, same place, few paragraphs up above. Section 6 talks about someone requesting a personal appearance, submit their request or proposal in writing. And Mr. Zurk, I'm sure this is a question for you, these days, do we consider an email to be in writing?
Absolutely.
So,
Absolutely.
in writing is good enough. Don't, don't need to clarify and say... Don't, don't need to clarify and say email, whatever. All right, that's good. I got one more.
Yeah, sorry, so, if somebody calls you, Mr. Catterett, and asks for a personal appearance, is that, I mean, do you, do you then turn around and ask them to fill out a form, or to email you, or do you, hey, I'd really like to, I mean, you have some people that potentially are of a generation that don't use email or letters, so I just didn't know if, if we've ever, if you've ever had it, and if it's an issue, or, you know, some sort of other, I, I know I'm getting into the weeds here, but requests to be heard, it says "in writing," but has somebody ever called and said, hey, can I come speak about the dirt on the field, and I wanna talk about that?
It's only happened, I think, twice since I've been here, where it's both times were in writing, so that the question really wasn't, didn't come up. I know the, the city clerk, I think, had the process for council in writing, so.
Fair enough.
I think we would need to have that document.
That works, thank you.
Okay. Another one, Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you. Last, going back to section nine, that last section that's to be added, "The mayor may, with consent of the council, remove a member from the commission for misconduct or neglect, neglect of duty." And maybe I didn't look through every single line, because I was focusing on highlights and strikes. Do we have a defined section of what misconduct or neglect of duty, or is that kind of at the interpretation of?
I think you're getting close, Wiggins.
Hey, man, I trust you, and I hope you're here for a long time, but this stuff is on paper.
You kinda stole my thunder there, I was curious about that.
That's, that's my only issue, is do we have a definition of, of what that is, you know, where is it defined? And if not, I just, I would really hate for a mayor to take a leap, and just because they don't like the cologne that person's wearing, or the things that, all the questions that some people sit up here and continually ask, meeting in and meeting out, all of a sudden, oh, well, that's misconduct, and you're gone.
Well, it's, it's a good point, so, it's, it's pretty subjective, so I'm curious, I'm, I'm curious of the same thing and same wording, so, if there's any answer to that.
It is, so what, the caveat there would be, it has to have the consent of the council, so you have to have a majority of the council also agree that, however the, is being defined as neglect of duty.
Sure, which, which, that's good, because then it does provide, it's not just a hard, fast, but is there, and Mr. Zur, maybe you know, I'm trying to remember from my time on the charter, but was there consent of the council, is that at a regular meeting, or can that be at a work session where essentially, in a conversation of, I wanna remove somebody, and I, I just want your approval to do it, and it's the thumbs up, thumbs down, or is it more, you know, back room?
It, it will need to be done by, it will need to be done by the same process that a new commission member is appointed, so it's going to be presented at a work session in all likelihood, that's how the mayor's been doing it as of late, and then if there are no objections raised, it's voted upon, and I believe on a first item or consent agenda, or, I don't recall if it's consent agenda or first item, on, on a regular session agenda. This is one of those rare circumstances where you've got language that says misconduct or neglect of duty. Most of the time, legal will be interested in making sure to define every term that it possibly can, and in this particular case, I'm looking for a little bit of wiggle room for determination to be made. I would note for you that a neglect of duty or a misconduct would be anything that would be popped up in your conflicts of interest for statutory provisions, it's going to be a little bit more interpretive at the end of the day, based upon circumstances presented. And again, you do have the protection of the council there in that particular regard, so just getting crossways with the mayor doesn't necessarily cut it, you're still gonna have the opportunity to present a, a case for the council to make their determination.
And that, that was gonna be my question, is, is if the mayor decides that there's been misconduct or neglect of duty, does that individual have the opportunity to be present at the time to, to defend themselves?
Well, since it will be part of a council agenda item, there is always an opportunity for personal appearance, or something along those lines on the agenda, in order to make that, that presentation.
So, then, the individual would know in advance of their potential removal? I mean, because that's, that's another thing, too, is, you, you, you know, some people do read the, the minutes, or the, the agendas when they come out, other people don't, and so.
I'm not sure the commission member itself, the commission member would receive direct notification of that removal. I would suggest that it would be an appropriate thing for staff to do, and for the council and the mayor to conduct or to, to implement, but I'm not so sure there's a requirement under it, it's public notice with regard to all of the actions for a regular council meeting.
Yeah, it's kinda been my public witness over the last 20 years, that when removal from a commission occurs, it's generally at the end of their term, because oftentimes, we reappoint people to the term for another three years if everything's going smoothly, but if you wanted, had somebody else that was interested in the position, you would give them an opportunity, it's usually at the end of that particular person's term of office, or appointed term. And I've not seen anybody really removed in the last 20 years during their three-year term, or four-year term, whatever the.
Well, I would think that neglect of duty or misconduct would be pretty serious, and there's a lot of things, yeah, so.
Yeah, I just, and for the record, this was not directed at you, Mayor Turnbull, this was future mayors, should you choose to not seek reelection, you know, in the next 20 years, or whatever, so.
Well, you know what, and you bring up a good point, Matt, because prior to my arrival, there was a bit of upheaval here going on, and I think those, there were some board appointments that got moved around.
Right.
Using that particular terminology, possibly, so.
Yeah. All right, if I can slip us over to section 11, so, still under, still under article six, meetings and public hearings, just looked a little inconsistent to me, so I thought I'd ask, in section 11, second sentence, we say, "At least seven days' notice must be given to the director in order to provide," yeah, sorry, I'm not reading that right, "in order for written notice of continuance to be given to all interested parties." So, that's just a straight seven days. If you go back to section six, talks about at least five working days in advance of the next regular meeting. So, I was just gonna ask, the five working days in section six was fine with me, I, I'm kind of translating in section 11, the seven days' notice sounds roughly equivalent to five working days in a regular week, but, Mr. Zur, Mr. Catterett, do you see any benefit to trying to make those two sections consistent in what kinda days we're talking about?
You are talking about two separate individuals here, you're talking about groups that might be willing, wanting to come in under your personal appearances, and instead of an individual who is coming in with an actual agenda item on, for consideration.
Yeah, wanting continuance, so, you think they, you think they should stay the way they are?
Right.
Yeah, because if, if I have to give seven days' notice that I'm canceling my presentation, then if, if, if you only gave me five, then in theory, someone could request a, a personal, a personal appearance five days in advance, and they, they grant them that, and then later in the day, I call in and can't, and want a continuance of my presentation, and now you've gotta reach back out to that person who requests the personal appearance, be like, hey, just kidding, we're not holding it, and then you leave yourself open for the opportunity to go, or are you canceling because I wanna be there?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't really figuring the two instances going with each other, I was just, I was just looking at the, what appeared to be a little bit of inconsistency to me, in one place, we talked about working days, in the other section.
Oh, the working days versus the calendar days.
Which they're essentially the same thing, because seven days and five working days are, is the same, the same thing, so.
They're, they are saying the same thing, the, the key being that it's all about the meeting, and what happens for the agenda of the meeting, so we need to have at least a week's notice, whether it's seven calendar days or five working days, it's still a week, in order for us to properly prepare the agenda and publish it.
But you're just wanting consistency, I see what you're saying now, yeah.
I'm perfect, I'm perfectly fine, from, from a practical standpoint, I'm perfectly fine with the way it's worded now, I just wanted to ask if that inconsistency bothered anybody else, and it's not a big deal. Got another question, article seven, Order of Business, section two, and, Mr. Zur, I think you may have actually called me on this at some point in time, or at least, at least advised me, but the current wording says, "Motion from the floor must be made and passed in order to amend or add to any item on the agenda." And so, my question was, it's not unusual on certain occasions for us to change the order of agenda items, you know, just like down under New Business, if we've got a fairly, fairly lengthy agenda for us, and, and decide it doesn't really make sense for an applicant to have to stay through a bunch of other cases, we can move them to the beginning, does that also require a motion from the floor?
To alter your agenda or to take an item out of order?
Yeah, just.
You'll have a motion to take an item out of order, and then the second for that, and then the item will be identified, and that's when you're going to present, talking about amending your agenda?
Okay, so it would, changing the order would fall under amending the agenda, so we're covered, all right. The, the other item, while I'm there, I'll slip back to section one, we, we had a little discussion about this, but I went back, actually, I didn't look at every single meeting agenda, but I looked at a random sample over about the past 10 years, looked at two prior versions of, of bylaws, and found that it's, the, what's printed has differed over time, but typically, the pledge of allegiance was the second item, when it, when it was written in the bylaws, and actually, I think I prefer the flow with call to order, pledge of allegiance, kinda gets everybody's attention, gets, gets everybody on their feet, and then we sit down and we can do roll call, and, and roll right into the, roll right into the rest of the business. So, my, my preference, based on, just, it, it seems to flow better. Not that I can't change if I have to, but I, I think I would prefer to have number two be the pledge, number three be roll call, if it's, if that doesn't offend anybody's I like consistency with the other boards and commissions, but they can change.
Quick question.
Commissioner Bowie?
Small question, I looked through my bylaws, and maybe I missed it, you guys could help me with this, maybe, being as though we're in a, in a, kind of an atmosphere environment where there's high alert, and everybody, you know, there's shootings and things going on, was there anything in the bylaws that I might have missed regarding security at the meetings in terms of public hearings, and, and, you know, you know, is that, was that in the bylaws that I missed it? Or could it be considered as something that needs to go in the bylaws if I didn't, if I was reading them correctly? Just something to consider, with the environment that we're in, a lot of issues going on, and, you know, it, it hearkens me back to when we had the meeting with so many people here. We had one meeting with 30 people, and a few months later, we had 90 or 100 people in the room, and we did have a, one security guy, I think, in there, which, you know, so, is that a part of the bylaws, or has it been considered at all?
I don't recall it being part of the bylaws, I know that it's a standing invitation from our police department, if, if we feel, chairman feels, if we anticipate a crowd, especially at a contentious issue, that we could have security here if, if we request it. It's really somewhat open at this point, I don't believe it's in the bylaws, I don't recall seeing.
No, and I'm also, Commissioner Bowie, I don't know if you've got this page, I can hand it down, but this is the backside normally of the agenda, so it's meeting procedures, and when we have a public hearing, I don't normally read it verbatim, but this is, this is pretty much the standard, public can speak under the following circumstances, and if you wish to speak, come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and, and so forth, would you, would you like to see that?
Sure, so, speaking to the mayor.
Well, it's the second page of your agenda item, I don't have your agenda packet, we always put the procedures in there, meeting procedures.
So, to the, okay, I see it, I got it. To, to the mayor, as a former police chief, is, what is, what is your take on that, is that out of, out of the question, to include something like that maybe in the future in the bylaws, is that something that we don't wanna even go near, or what?
Well, as Mr. Catterett, as Mr. Catterett referenced, we have the opportunity to request security at any time, and I think it was really agenda-specific as to whether or not that that's something that we need to work toward, or do something with, and we did have security when we did anticipate a large crowd here, and, you know, everybody's got a heightened sense of security, of security at those points, so I don't, I don't know if it needs to be a bylaws item there, I, I think it does give us, like Jim says, we've always got that standing invitation to request that, we just have, as is evidenced tonight, wouldn't necessarily need to pay a police officer to be in the room with us tonight, given the non-controversy of what we're talking about, except with me and Wiggins here, so.
Well, this is something to think about, because, you know, even though there's nobody in the room, would it be worth the city to consider, at your city council, city council meetings, at your planning and zoning, where you're gonna have, maybe, if, there's a, the TIF commission doesn't meet all the time, that might not be one, but it's just something to consider with the heightened level of awareness that everybody's at at this time, just something to think about.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wiggins? Without divulging too much, I, I believe we do have quick response abilities, emergency procedures in place, that I, I know at least for council meeting, I'm sure you're well aware of what they are, but I believe we have the ability to instantaneously summon the police department, who is literally six feet below you at this very moment, and there's a stairwell that leads right to many of our officers, so we do, I believe, have...
So, somebody here has that?
I believe there are, and.
We have, we actually have just recently enhanced our security measures within the council chamber, for electronic and digital purposes.
And so, I, I believe.
We don't really wanna divulge.
Right, that's why I was being extremely vague, but I believe, I believe there is somebody within this room that has the ability to notify the police department, and I believe, do they in their monitors, do they have this feed?
Yes.
So, this live feed that is available online is being also monitored by our police department, so if somebody were to come in and cause a ruckus, they are aware of that as well.
Okay, I didn't know that.
I didn't either.
Or if a commissioner gets out of line. Commissioner Peterman?
I think there was discussion in one of the council meetings or work sessions about increased security, possibly at the door, also, that will help with that, if that actually takes place.
That's only actually going to be on court nights.
Okay.
Yeah, this is court nights, right?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zur, when, when we wear ourselves out discussing this, should we have a motion?
Or is it just a formality?
Based, based on our desire for an updated bylaws?
Actually, Mr. Catterett and I had spoken about that shortly, I have, in the interim discussion, had the opportunity to put together the proposed language for attendance, but I, I think the notion would be whether or not you all instruct staff to proceed forward with drafting the proposed changes, and presenting it to you at the next commission meeting, so that you all would have an opportunity to kind of digest it, review it in advance of the meeting, and we'd be able to answer any additional questions at that time. So, I have proposed language, but I will provide that to Mr. Catterett, if that's the desire of this commission.
I'm, I'm just kind of, yeah.
So, I can make a motion to continue the adoption of the revised bylaws till our next meeting, so that we can review the updated attendance verbiage?
Probably, yeah, I was gonna say, probably doesn't even need a, a motion, unless you want to give instruction to staff that's specific as to any particular item, in that case, staff would absolutely take that instruction.
I, I wouldn't give instruction, but I would say, if I may, I would say that you might get it out to us ahead of time, so we can, and if we have any questions, allow us to maybe, I don't know, I don't know, if we can't discuss it prior, but at least give us some time to look at it, and, and be ready for any dissection.
So, just, you know, occasionally, I've, I've just done a straw poll, or whatever, which, just to make sure that most all of us are on the same page. So, Mr. Zur, you have the discussion on article six, section nine, meeting attendance, you, you've got that under control?
Yeah.
And was there general agreement on section seven?
Section, article seven, section one.
Article seven, section one. Article Seven, Section One, call to order, then pledge of allegiance, then roll call?
No changes.
So, so no change?
Right, no, yeah. It'll, it'll be the 2015 version.
Yep.
And otherwise, the other, the other proposed changes in the name were good. Sound right? I see.
You were flagging them down?
Yes. Ms.
Just to follow up with Mr. Bowie.
Bowie, huh?
Bowie, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Was when I provided the staff report this time, did you feel like that was enough time to review or giving it to you a little bit prior to that would be better?
You provided it to us Monday, right? Was it Sunday?
No, it was Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
A lot on my mind. That's plenty.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you had enough.
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
So you get a weekend. All right, Mr. Zur, if you don't feel like we absolutely have to have a motion, and we've got guidance to staff, we'll bring it back and just what, vote to adopt the bylaws if we like it, the final version?
If we want to be formal about it, you could do a motion to continue this discussion to the next meeting for us to be able to present documentation.
Commissioner Arkea sounded like he was really dying to make a motion, so I'm.
Well, I, I just assumed since that was the one agenda item, if we didn't actually do anything with that agenda item, that he probably wanted to have something stating that we talked about it and that we as a group decided we wanted to push it off to the next one, but if we don't, that's fine.
You'll still get paid the same, you'll still get paid the same.
So why don't.
Mr. Zur.
Why don't I provide this as an option for your consideration? The language that would potentially be presented to you the next go around would be, no commissioner shall fail to attend three consecutive regular meetings of the commission or more than 25% of the commission's regular scheduled meeting dates as established by Article Six, Section One of these rules of procedure during any 12-month period without being excused. The commission may make a recommendation to the, the mayor requesting the removal and replacement of a commission member for their remaining unexpired term as indicated in Article Three. The mayor may, with the consent of the city council, remove a member from the commission for misconduct or neglect of duty. And if that's a, kind of the rough idea as to what you all are looking for, then my suggestion would be you can make a motion to continue this matter, allowing staff the opportunity to draft this into a formal document for your further review and consideration at the next council, or at the next commission meeting.
Make the motion.
Okay.
You did?
No, he's going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, don't steal his motion.
No, no. So I'll make a motion to continue the acceptance of the bylaws to allow staff time to document the proposed changes to the attendance section for our review prior to the next commission meeting.
Commissioner Bowie, you want to second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Arkea, second by Commissioner Bowie to continue the bylaws matter with the proposed changes to be incorporated by staff and bring back to us at the next meeting. That sound okay, Mr. Zur?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor of the continuance, raise a hand please. Let's see, I've got seven in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. All right, thank you all very much. Thank you staff for your patience. And back to the agenda for this evening. Mr. Zur, would you like to give us a city council report?
Thank you, Chairman, I would be happy to do so. I will report to you from three separate meetings, the first occurring on December 23rd, 2019, the next one, January 13th, 2020, and January 27th, 2020. I would note for you that on the January 27th, 2020 council meeting, there were no items that would be directly reflective of this commission's work. And so I will simply set that one aside for the time being, for the January 20, I'm sorry, the January 13th council meeting, or council meeting, there were two items of interest for the commission. The first item of interest was the Fox Ridge Business Park Final Platte. This was originally heard and approved by the commission or recommended approval by the commission on December 17th, 2019. Basically, the Hy-Vee location, the commercial subdivision located at Foxwood Drive and Fox Ridge Drive. So that has received approval and unanimous approval from the council to move forward, and that was the second reading of that. The other one was an impact field house, the conditional use permit that you all heard on December 17th. At the December 23rd meeting, the council took the matter up for consideration and approved it, I'm sorry, the impact field house conditional use permit was taken up for new, new business first reading at the January 13th meeting. During the course of that meeting, it was approved as first reading unanimously as presented, and you will recall that that did not include any exterior lights at that time. Staff was given instruction and the applicant was given instruction to go back and, and provide additional documentation with regard to a potential lighting plan for submission. Since that timeframe, the application has actually been pulled, so it was not on the most recent January 27th, 2020 application. The applicant at this time, I don't know if we have any additional information from them at this point, but there is no pending application now.
You, you're saying they pulled it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. The, I don't believe there are any other items, classification of the, or reclassification of zoning for the Raymore industrial development. This is the Van Trust property, originally heard by this commission on October 16th and approved, first read by the city council on November 25th, 2019, and second reading approved on the December 23rd, 2019 council meeting. Those will be the major items that I can see that would be of interest for this commission. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have, and obviously always welcome the input from the mayor, Mr. Catterett, for additional docs.
Yes. Commissioner Arkea.
Do you recall which meeting the UDC was, or the updated UDC or the code was accepted by the council?
The updated city code was, was adopted by council second reading on December 23rd.
Okay.
That entire code that had an effective date of January 1st.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zur.
Yep.
Mr. Catterett, Mr. Jardoe, we'd love to hear a staff report.
Yes, a couple items this evening, looking at our calendar, we will have a meeting on February 18th, rules of procedure amendment will be on the agenda. We also have two items, one being a public hearing for the proposed rezoning. Previously, it was referred to as the Conway Place Development. This is the town center fourth area, which is to the east of city hall here, so it's south of, south of the bazaar and the car wash and the fire district station, that undeveloped land there, north of Pine Street, east of Sunset, currently zoned commercial, they're requesting a rezoning to planned unit development with the proposal being to allow a total of 67 townhome units. They'd be in a, a variety of either four, fourplex building, I think there's one five, there's one six, maybe even an eightplex townhome building on that property. So that would be a requested rezoning, which includes a preliminary development plan since it's a PUD, which will show the layout of the buildings and, and the amenities that would go along with that rezoning. They're also requesting a final platte, so they have to replatte that area in order to create the different lots for the townhome units. So unusual for them, for an applicant to have a preliminary final together. It is allowed by code, and they have submitted all the required construction drawings, et cetera. The, the, the public streets are there, Conway Street, Pine, Sun, Sunset, they are doing a small private drive to provide access to a few of the units, but most of the public improvements are actually in place. So that public hearing and the final platte scheduled for the 18th. Also on the 18th, our board of adjustment will have a, a case. There is a request for a variance. It's one of the, actually one of two remaining lots in the Edge Water Second Phase. It's a very uniquely shaped lot. It's actually bounded on three sides by streets, actually a curved street. So it's been very difficult to find a, a home plan that fits on that lot. The property owner has found one, does require a couple of minor setback adjustments to get the lot, the home to fit. Ultimately, what you want to see there is a home that fits in the neighborhood. If you tried to put a home in there that fit the setbacks, it would be, it would be noticeable. It would be much smaller than the other homes. So that is the request going in front of the board of adjustment, and that's all we have currently scheduled for the commission. Couple of the other items, Mayor Turnbull last night presented a, a name for the vacated seat for Commissioner Armstrong, resident of Raymore. Jeremy Manser is being proposed as a replacement for the unexpired term of Commissioner Armstrong. And that's a Ward Four appointment.
First name is actually Jeremy.
What did I, did I?
You said Jerry.
Jeremy.
We have one of those already.
One's enough.
Yeah.
The, the last item then is just a reminder again on our planning conference that we still have the availability for commissioner to attend. It is April 25th to the 28th. If anybody is still interested, we still have the ability to register you for that conference. So I just wanted to throw that reminder out to the commission this evening. That would conclude my staff report. For public works staff report, I, I need to announce if anybody is not aware that Greg Rocos, who was our assistant public works director, attended our meetings for many years, did resign, he did accept the director of public works position for the city of Belton. So Greg has moved on to that position, so we do have a vacancy. We are currently actively searching for a new assistant public works director. In the meantime, Mr. Crass will be back in front of us serving that role, just as I have several times, and we will find a, a suitable replacement and bring them on. But I, for anybody that wasn't aware of that, Mr. Rocos moving on, it was very happy for him, but a tremendous loss for the city. He, he served us very well, as I'm sure you're all aware through his, through his many meetings here and his participation here. As far as project update, I will have to defer until Mr. Crass is here in a couple weeks.
Thank you. All right, that takes us along to public comment, seeing no public, I can offer the invitation to come forward to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, but seeing no public, let's move on to commission member comment. And I think if I can start here close on my right, Commissioner Wiggins.
Thank you, steady staff as always. Ms. Jardoe, correct, correct, or Jard, please?
Ew, like, ew, this is silly.
Jardoe?
Yes.
Jardoe, welcome. We will eventually get your name correct, I promise, Ms. Jardoe. Thank you as always, hope everybody, if anybody does happen to venture out downtown tomorrow, stay very warm. I have canceled my plans to do so, and I'm staying home in front of the television with a pot of chili. I think that is a much better choice personally, but I'm also very hopeful that Patty Mahomes is going to bring a lot of these to us, so I'll have future better weather dates. So knock on wood for that one, but everybody have a great rest of your week.
All right, I'll bounce back and forth. Vice Chair Pfizer.
I really don't have anything to say, other than Happy New Year, everybody. We haven't been here since the New Year, so I hope it's a, a good year for everybody and that we do lots of great work.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterman.
I noticed some action going on over by the new Hy-Vee site, electrical, and there was a piece of equipment sitting on the land and stuff, so that's, that's exciting to be able to see something happening there. There's other stirs, I'm sure, for the future, according to David, so thanks staff for all the hard work and, and I guess go Chiefs. I don't know where we're going until next year, but we're going someplace.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Arkea.
I just want to also welcome Ms. Jardoe to the, to the commission meetings and to your position at the city. I look forward to hearing from you in the future and working with you. So welcome. And then I just wanted noted that I wish Mr. Rocos the best in his new endeavor with the city of Belton. I enjoyed his presentations as well and, and, you know, his ability to, to describe where things were taking place in such a way that I knew exactly what he was talking about and echo Commissioner Pfizer's words in wishing everyone a wonderful 2020.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowie.
Not much. Welcome, like everyone else. I got a weird question though, seems like my book is pretty old. I mean, is it just me or it seemed like a lot of the stuff that I have is not really updated? I mean, am I missing something with, I'm, I'm missing some calendars and see updated list? Is it just me or am I speaking off the cuff here?
Sounds like your invitation to get you a new book, so we could do that.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't even, I don't even have a book.
You don't have a book?
I don't have a book.
So I didn't mean to bring that, you know, can of worms, but I just, it's a weird thing, but it just seemed like I'm, I'm looking through this, I'm saying, well, we've updated that and we've updated that, so just something to think about for staff.
Absolutely, we could, we could bring the updated books for you. It has all, incorporates all the amendments cleanly into your code books.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
No, it was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Turnbull.
Jim, it sounds like you need to produce several of those books from the comments up here. You might get to working on that. So last night at the work session, one of the things that was brought up was a, a TIF district proposal for the Willow Inn Shopping Center, which wraps around Walgreens, it includes the old Oerschland Building and the acreage that we're talking about where the new Hy-Vee is going to be and that frontage along area there. It, it met with a lot of affirmative head nods with, from the council, so I'm hoping that we can move forward with that, which will generate a lot of work for us because there's going to be a lot of different items that will come before the planning and zoning commission fairly quickly if this generates the kind of interest we think it's going to generate. So just kind of hold on for the ride on this one, because it, it looks like it might be a really good one. And with regard to the property, I don't know if it's announcable yet or not, but there's a hot prospect for purchasing the Dean properties on the North Galleria area. I'm not sure that that's announcable yet, but it's coming very close to fruition, the plans, have they, has the bidding gone out for the new road yet? Can you, can you talk about that a little bit, Jim?
Yes, so the relocated Kentucky Road, Westgate Drive, which we approved the, the Westgate Platte recently, the city has gone out to bid for the construction of the Westgate Drive, which includes the turn lane. So it'll be a, a right turn later in front of the Firestone for westbound traffic to go north onto the new Westgate Drive, so that's all included as part of this project. And actually also will be removing the old farm access that's in front of the car wash that people that may be not familiar with, the car wash entrance, try to turn in there and they end up blocking traffic on 58 and it's a mess and it's unsightly looking, so we'll, we'll remove that and clean that whole area up, make that a little bit nicer, street frontage in front of both Belfanti's Car Wash and Firestone. So we're excited to get that project done. It's the last project the city has on the list of projects that are approved by the general obligation bond. So once that gets underway and, and finished, we would have completed all of the projects from the general obligation bond, so we're excited to get that finished.
Thank you, sir. So absent Mr. Crass, you were able to give that report, that's for sure. But that's all I had for this evening. Thanks to staff again for preparation on this. Mr. Zur, as always, bring great guidance to us here, and I appreciate you all the time and happy 2020 to everybody. By the way, did you guys see my, my Facebook post about the USS Kansas City? So they posted a, on Facebook, so what was really interesting is the Kansas City did a promo that they produced onboard ship to support the Kansas City Chiefs in their efforts at the Super Bowl. Their whole number is 22, and so the number of twos that were involved with this whole Super Bowl was kind of serendipitous if you think about it. Andy winning his 222nd win and the dates of the actual Super Bowl, whole number of the ships, it was just kind of, it was just kind of fun to think about. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I certainly enjoyed the color of the lighting, the red, the red in the lighting, somebody went to some trouble there and showed off very nicely. Thank you to staff, it's a pleasure to meet you and welcome aboard. Now you're probably shaking your head saying, what did I get myself into? But every meeting is different, you know, different cases, different, different dynamic, and I've learned over the years not to assume because I'm usually wrong. Let's see, thanks for all the updates, the news, congratulations to Mr. Rocos and, and we will certainly miss you, but. Congratulations to Mr. Rocos and, and we will certainly miss you, but Belton is not really that far away. Maybe this'll, uh, open some further opportunities for cooperation since we, uh, since we share a, a city limit line there on this side, on Raymore's side of Seventy-One Highway.
Well, you know what? At saying that, it was very fortuitous for us that he didn't leave us for some other region, uh, because he is working on that, uh, that project, the forty-nine and the fifty-eight highway, uh, project. And it's kind of the key, uh, because he's, uh, he's the one that's doing the, um, the build grant, uh, with the federal government and MoDOT. So it's, uh, you know, we're, you know, yeah, it's a build grant. We gotta, it's, uh, some people say we're, we're not gonna get it, but others say we've got a lot of opportunity there to move forward, but he's the consistent point there. So it is, gonna be nice for a regional effort to keep.
I'm sure it sounds right, but if you don't apply, you won't get it, so, you know, no harm in, no harm in trying and that's kind of necessary. Good. Unless anyone has any other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
Okay, I, I heard your voice first. Commissioner Bowie, was that a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I figured we'd, I figured.
Sorry, I should've raised my hand first and gotten called on. My apologies.
One way or the other, so motion by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Commissioner Bowie to adjourn the meeting tonight. All those in favor, raise a hand, please, and I count seven in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Thank you all.